Seven o'clock, the phone has made it to order. Broke, please.
Mr. Brooks?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Bryant?
Here.
Mr. Chaussee?
Here.
Ms. Crawl?
Here.
Mr. D. Francesco?
Here.
Mr. Johnston? Ms. Tyson Wright?
Here.
Mr. Valeska?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, I'm going to ask that we approve the meeting minutes from last month on the fourteenth and seventeenth. So move. Second. May I have a motion in a second? Any questions, comments, revisions? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approved. We have a student presentation from Cambridge Springs High School, Ella is here to update us.
Good evening, my name is Ella Marant, and I will be updating you on what is happening at Cambridge Springs so far this school year. The first day of school begins with our senior class on the football field at six thirty in the morning. Gather together to participate in Cambridge Springs' first ever senior sunrise. The new seniors got to eat a delicious pancake breakfast and spend their first morning together as a class. The plan is to also have a senior sunset on the last day of school. This is a new tradition that creates memories seniors will look back on fondly after graduation. Kickball fanatics at Cambridge Springs High School had a fun day on Friday, September first, when our school held the Students vs. Staff Kickball Rematch from the last day of the 2022 to 2023 school year. The students were victorious with a final score of three to two, bringing the series to a one-one. It was a great way to end the first week of school. Who knows, maybe we will host another epic rematch. The homecoming game will be on October sixth against Lakeview, and the dance will be held October seventh. Homecoming Court was announced last week. And candidates have been working hard on their campaigns. Congratulations to those on court. Peyton Leandro, Kalen Aster, Lilian Schultz, Cindy Zilhaber, Morgan Appleby, Daniel Brown, Zeke Carson, and DeMarco Green. Students are excited for this event that brings us all together at the beginning of the school year. For our fall sports teams have been working hard to start their season off strong. Tonight, there is a girls volleyball game at home against Eisenhower, and the girls soccer game away versus the Iroquois. Also today was a junior high football game at home against Union City, and a junior high girls basketball game away against Warren. We'd like to give a shout out to all the athletes putting in the work this season to bring our school Blue Devil pride. At Cambridge Springs Elementary School, on September eighth, the Cambridge Springs sixth grade students had the pleasure of hosting the 150th Bucktails Civil War Reindeer Actors. Students saw and learned about life in the Civil War times. Students did drilling and marching, as well as looked at artifacts and the daily life of the people of the eighteen hundreds. They participated in a one-room school, learning about it and the games children of that time played. Another event was dancing and etiquette. The students thought that they would hate this event, but it turned out to be a favorite for many. This event was part of our social studies curriculum. We studied the Civil War, and what a great kickoff for the unit. Fun and learning were had by all. Thank you for your time, we at the Pitchfork look forward to updating you again next month.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Any other student representatives? Alright, thank you. PAA representative, Debbie Miller?
Thank you for welcoming Ella. She's one of our freshman, first-year staff writer for the Pitchfork. And Audrey, our editor, had a volleyball match, and I said, "Ella, I think you can do this." And she said, "Okay, I will." And she did a great job.
She did fantastic.
Yep. So, good evening, members of the board, community, colleagues, and staff. I speak to you, as always, representing my esteemed colleagues in the Pencrest Education Association. As I often do, I try to encourage you to notice the good in our district, and tonight will be no different. I wonder if, as everyone came through the halls of Maplewood Elementary tonight, or maybe Monday night as well, if they took the chance to look around and get a glimpse of the environment. I took that opportunity to peer into some classrooms, browse the lobby and the halls. What did I see? I saw inviting signs and personalized items for each student to make sure that they knew they were wanted and cared about. I saw beautiful murals and creations that left me thinking, "Wow, who does that?" Or, "Wow, how did they create that?" I even saw a classroom that looked like a jungle, complete with vines, trees, and animals to the ceiling. I know if I was an elementary student, I would love to enter such an amazing classroom. I would be thinking, "This year is going to be awesome." And again, I thought, "Who does this?" The answer is both obvious and noteworthy. Our dedicated and highly trained teachers are the answer. Dedicated because there is no way that a jungle was created in the one official workday to get a classroom ready. That jungle and the other amazing things that I saw probably took days or weeks. And the second half of the answer is the teachers are expertly trained in understanding how students learn and in what environments growth and achievement thrive for students. It's why the jungle there, where there, in the jungle there, there were places for students to work in small groups and receive specialized attention and intervention to meet their needs, only as a skillful professional can do. And if in my gawking, I happen to notice, there were also less than twenty individual desks. And I knew that those members of the jungle had an above-average chance to survive in the wild. I knew that their professional in that room would be able to make a difference for each one of them. I say this all to remind you again of what is outstanding in Pencrest. It is our amazing kids and families, as well as the professionals that serve them. But what adds to that is our small size. Being three community-centered small schools is our blessing, not our curse. We offer here a real sense of belonging and roots for our students, who in a short time will leave our jungle and enter the real one in the world. I encourage the board to capitalize on that small and mighty mentality as we make decisions for our schools. Offer more opportunities and focus on the fact that they can happen in a small classroom setting. Colleges and universities advertise student-professor ratio or class size as a selling point, we should also. A small and mighty mentality takes, just takes careful and collaborative thought and planning. Even in this latest situation of a change facing Pencrest with the administration, I encourage the board to take time and make good decisions and well-thought-out plans to create more opportunities with more vision for what Pencrest can become. I started tonight by describing what is amazing in Pencrest and all the work and dedication I noticed just walking through the halls coming up to this meeting. I challenge the board to realize that all I described was done for, for kids by teachers who are entering their second year without a contract. It would not be surprising under those circumstances if there were no extras, no jungles. But that's not what I found. I urge you to consider that, appreciate that, and then work with us collectively, not behind closed doors alone, but talk with us to reach a fair contract that demonstrates your commitment to the staff who makes it all happen for the students in Pencrest. Thank you.
We don't have any registered citizens comments, however, citizens can come up and speak for two minutes on items on the agenda this evening.
Hi there, Catherine Edwards, I'm a Pencrest parent. I wish to acknowledge Better Pencrest for organizing the Stuff the Bus program. With the help of local churches, businesses, and bus companies, Better Pencrest created a way for the community to come together and collect over a thousand dollars worth of school supplies, resulting in eighteen large boxes to be distributed between three buildings. This is a huge success and example of how our community really does show up and come together for each other. Item C on the financial report references this donation as paper, pencils, markers, and notebooks. But I think it's important to recognize the sheer volume of the supplies collected. Each one of those essential items represents dollars that are not coming out of the pockets of the district or out of the pockets of the teachers to fill their classrooms. I would like to thank and commend Better Pencrest for their efforts for making these things happen, and I hope that they continue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional speakers on agenda items? Alright, Education Committee, I have a couple of updates. Next Tuesday, we have an Education Committee meeting on the nineteenth at six PM in the Cambridge Springs High School auditorium. Following that meeting, about seven o'clock, we have town hall listening sessions. In addition, there has been a presentation posted on the website, as well as a link to a survey. Right now, we have, last time I checked, a hundred and seventy-eight survey responses, mostly from parents. So, you know, that'll be open until the day before Thanksgiving, and that'll help the new board, you know, make some decisions and hit the ground running. As well as, at the listening sessions, we will take copious notes and make sure that we pass those on. Residents are encouraged, if you would like, to send an email to myself or bring a letter to be entered into the record so that we can pass that collective body of knowledge on. Additionally, we are currently working with the Hayden R. Hitchcock Memorial Foundation. They are working and raising a significant amount of funds for a donation for mental health. We are still in the early stages, I wanted the board to have some conversation about this. Right now, our plan is to work with the counselors and the principals to get a list of options and ideas for how to spend those possible donations. So, the board may have some additional information or thoughts and ideas about this?
Like I said, I just come, started working with them literally last night at eight o'clock, and we were in communication till ten o'clock or so. So, I don't have all the information together, but Tuesday at our education meeting, I am going to do a quick presentation on that, make sure I have all the facts. But this foundation has started because of the tragedy that the Hitchcock family had been through earlier this year. And they decided, instead of being, feeling sorry for themselves or whatever, that they're going to make an impact on this community. And by doing so, they are putting on fundraisers, and October seventh is a golf outing. And it's, it's become huge, it is fantastic what they're doing. And they want to share the funds with the Pencrest School District, along with Union City, and Perseus House in Bethesda. They've already done, they've already started a project with Bethesda. Rock climbing wall, that's what Bethesda requested. So, they give them the cash they needed, and they're off and running. They're not, they're not here to tell us how to spend the money. They're here to give us the money and let our counselors or principals or whomever say, "This is our need. This is where we're hurting, we could use a psychiatrist to come in one day a week," or whatever it may be, or speakers. It's up to us at each building, so that is something that's really nice. So, like I said, I'll have a lot more information Tuesday, and I'm going to set aside about five minutes to give a more detailed, and maybe even, maybe even somebody from the foundation to come here and speak to everybody also. So, that's really all I have right now, thank you.
We appreciate that. Any other comments otherwise? We hope to have more definitive information as far as activities and amounts for the board to approve next month. But I'm assuming we're all in favor of that in person, too?
Yeah, that's what I have to come to them tonight, I have to let them know that we are going to approve it, so. As long as we're all on board.
Gladly approve it, absolutely, absolutely, thank you. Another item for discussion or information we discussed on Monday is the comprehensive plan draft. We will vote on that next month as well. Items for approval, item C, recommend approval of the attached MOU with CareStar Incorporated to assist families to access county and Commonwealth services. So moved, second. May I have a motion in a second? Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, motion approved. Item D, recommend approval of the trigonometry book as listed. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approved. Item E, recommend approval of the seven speakers for the upcoming school year. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approved. Facility and transportation report, recommend approval of the listed contacted student transportation drivers. Second. Do we have a motion in a second? Any questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approved. Financial report, item A, recommend approval of the attached treasurer's reports. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any objections? Motion approved. Item B, recommend approval of the payment of the attached disbursements. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any objections?
I'm just going to abstain from the vote on that.
Okay. Motion approved. Item C, recommend approval to accept the community donation for the elementary school students. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approved. Item D, recommend approval of the five-hundred-dollar donation from credit, Federal Credit Union for Cambridge Springs Elementary School. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Questions, comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Objections? Motion approved. Personnel report, I'd like to do a consent agenda, items A through G, resignations, tenure, coach resignations, non-instructional hires, professional transfers, support staff substitutes, and board-approved volunteers. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? Any questions on any of the items? Comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion approved. Item ten was added recently, the exact amount, but recommend approval of settlement for government entity claims against Altria in the amount of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. So moved, second. Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor, say aye. Motion approved. Is there any new business this evening? We had executive sessions on the eleventh and fourteenth today for personnel negotiations. We do have several registered speakers, Tim Kroski.
So, good evening. My name's, for those of you who don't know me, my name is Tim Kroski. My wife and I and our two children, ages four and six, live in Troy Township. My daughter attends Crawford Christian Academy. So, what I'm here tonight to speak on, on behalf of my family and some others in the Maplewood attendance area, is the issues that we've had with transportation to Crawford Christian Academy. So, I assume most of you have children or who at one time or another were in school. So, I'd like you to think back and remember on that, and think about the morning routine. It's hectic, right? Poking the bear, waking them up, prodding them out, multiple alarms. Right now, as students of Crawford Christian Academy, we have a bus stop pickup for my family, which is six miles from my home. So, add to that morning routine, that hectic hustle and bustle, approximately thirty minutes of time to gather the children up, put them in the car. We have a younger child, so that just makes that that much harder. You drive to the bus stop, is the bus on time, you wait for the bus, you go back. It's, it's hectic. For two working parents, it makes it especially hectic. I asked too, like, what if we had no vehicle? Broke down, whatever. I don't know how we would get our daughter to school. So, I brought for you tonight what I have found as the Public School Code of nineteen forty-nine, the Transportation section. And I would like to read to you the first highlighted section. "When provision is made by the Board of School Directors for the transportation of public school pupils to and from such schools, or to and from any points within or without the Commonwealth in order to provide field trips, as herein provided, the Board of School Directors shall also make identical provision for the free transportation of pupils who regularly attend non-public kindergarten, elementary, and high schools, not operated for profit, to and from such schools, or to and from any points within or without the Commonwealth in order to provide field trips, as herein provided." So, I ask, I understand, we're getting transportation. Would you call that identical transportation? It's a distance, it just, it makes it hard. I ask, and I'm not saying that I support this, but should Maplewood students also have to meet at group bus stops six miles from their home? If we read the second section, "Kinds of transportation liability insurance. The total distance which any pupil must travel by the public highway to or from school in addition to such transportation does not exceed one and one-half miles." One and one-half miles, not six. I understand, transportation's hard, logistics, they're hard, I get it. And I'm not here, I don't look for, I'm not looking for special treatment. I'd look for a compromise. I understand, we've been told, we basically cut and dry two options. We either are picked up at home at five-thirty in the morning, or we have these group bus stops. I firmly believe that there are more options than that, and that a conversation between administration, which we have not been able to have, is warranted. Perhaps group stops in the afternoon, when life isn't, is hectic. Or maybe in the morning, whichever's better. Let's just make things work. Maybe the bus stops should be closer, maybe they should be within the mile and a half. Maybe instead of running one bus for all the Maplewood students in attendance, would it be feasible to run two vans, to run two separate routes? I don't know these answers, but I would like to have that conversation. And I, my wife and the other families who are in this same situation are tired of being ignored. We have spoke to, Mr. Glasspool has ignored my wife, or not Mr. Glasspool, sorry, Mr. Dixon, the transportation. Ignored my wife. Any answers that other families have from him are just brushing off, not really listening, ignoring. So, I guess the other things I'd like you to consider and look at. If you look at the second and third pages that I have, that's the map from my house to the bus stop. And then when you compare that in attendance, I've got the Maplewood school attendance zone map. There's four stops. Chaplainville Fire Hall is where we go. There's a stop on Fontstown Road. There's a stop at French Town, I believe it's at St. Hippolyte Church. And Blooming Valley, I believe it's at the church. So, when I drew a radius from my home to Chaplainville Fire Hall, I came up with those bigger circles that you see. So, for base, essentially, for each group stop, that is the circle for which those, the families within that circle would come to that stop.
Ten seconds.
I also want you to see the smaller circle, that's the mile and a half around my home. Thank you. I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Greta Tofelsky?
Are we going to be able to discuss that?
Yeah.
Sorry?
As are both speakers.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Greta Tofelsky, and I live in the Maplewood attendance area. I am here tonight to discuss my concerns and frustrations regarding the transportation of my daughter who attends Crawford Christian Academy in Mevo. For the second year in a row, I am being forced to travel seven miles from my home, one way, to have my child get on her bus. Then, I have to travel back in the afternoon to pick her up and back home again. I have spoken to the Transportation Director, Mr. Dixon, and the Superintendent, Mr. Glasspool, about my concerns, and I was told that this is the only option I have if I want my child to attend Crawford Christian Academy. This is a problem for many reasons. The first is, it makes it difficult for working parents, those with younger children who have to go along, dealing with uncertain weather conditions, and it results in extra expenses for gas and adds additional wear and tear on our vehicles. For myself, it is roughly an extra five thousand miles put on my vehicle in one year. Second, there are numerous van routes within Maplewood who pick up students who attend other non-public schools, such as Seton Catholic School and the Learning Center, both of which are located in Mevo. Why are these students picked up at their house while my child and the others at Crawford Christian Academy are not? Third, my taxes are still going to Pencrest School District, not Crawford Christian Academy. And as such, my children should have the same opportunities to be picked up from their house like all the other children who ride the bus to Maplewood, or like those who get to ride in vans for countless reasons. Fourth, as in the document I just passed out, there is a Pencrest document titled "Transportation Procedures" from the Transportation Office and Director himself, that states on the very last page, under "Transportation Efficiency." "In order to keep maximum route efficiency and minimize transportation time, routes may be consolidated, group bus stops will be utilized, and bus stops may be located up to zero-point-five miles from a rider's residence." My child's group stop is six-point-five miles over that limit. Why? When speaking to Mr. Dixon, I asked him how many other parents in the district are driving over five miles to get their child to a group stop. He could not give me an exact answer. I asked for this information in writing from the superintendent as well, and have yet to get the requested information. The administration of CCA did tell us that there was discussion between the Transportation Director and the Superintendent, and the family's only other option for busing would be early pickup times and late drop-offs, and that it would be a total of two hour and twenty-minute bus route. There is a total of nine families from the Maplewood attendance area, and I believe that I would like to see that information, the route firsthand, to see if this is an exaggeration. We are being told that we only have two options, but the Transportation Director has already made his mind up that he does not want to make it fair or easy for our families. There are other options, such as individual vans to pick up our families to get them, or split up families on two small buses who live close to one another. While I understand that the numbers of students attending Crawford Christian Academy from our district are higher than other locations that students are being transported to, I feel that our families are being discriminated against and treated unfairly because of the choice we made for our child to go to a different school. It is not fair that I'm forced to have an additional expense to get my child to school because I have to drive seven miles to get her to the bus stop. I am asking that the school board look into this matter more and for the possibility of discussion with the other families from the Maplewood attendance area who are all involved. of discussion with the other families from the Maplewood Attendance Area who are all involved. Thank you.
Before Mr. Custer speaks, if you'd like to ask questions, I'll do my best.
Well, are we in compliance with the law? Because it doesn't sound like it.
So we have about eighteen students, and they probably know better than I do, that go to the school. We've worked with the Administration on CCA, again, to pick up these families. So the group bus stops was discussed, and there are some folks who are not happy with that.
Well, but are we in compliance with the law? It does not sound like we are.
Well, you know, there is a
Yes, no. We are not in compliance with the law. Is that correct?
If it was agreed upon by the, by the, by the schools, obviously those parents are upset.
Are we in compliance with the law?
If the parents agree, then we're in compliance.
The parents obviously don't agree.
Yeah, I know, there are.
I personally heard from more parents than these two parents have come on about the same situation, and they're not happy.
I did speak to, to Mr. Tofelsky and another parent, and my comment to them was to go back and work with the Administration to come up with some solutions.
Well, it sounds like they've been trying.
Actually, I'm going to say that this is
Yeah, I agree.
That we have vans, there's, the only excuse for this not happening the right way is people not wanting to make it happen the right way. Six and a half miles, seven miles, five, I don't care, that's just too much. And I see these vans running around, there's no reason we can't have, we can't come up with a solution that betters our taxpayers, and just because they're going to Christian School.
That's not, we're not
No, no, I didn't mean that.
Well, it does look that way, because we, who else is having to drive their kids these distances?
I would say just from people that I know out there, if you go to one attendance area, and you choose to go, so if you live in Cambridge, you decide that you want your kid to go to Segur Town, you would provide transportation to your kid, and it would be, you know, however far it is from your home to there.
It's not what the law says.
But, I mean, that's, that's what happens.
Yeah, but we have to, we have to follow the law.
But the law says we have to provide transportation within ten miles of the district. The policy, and I'm not saying that this is convenient or easy, policies can be changed, laws cannot. The law says you have to provide transportation, which is happening, just not the way the parents want it.
No, the law is, the law is specific, according to what we just read, that it has to be within a half a mile.
So we transport to roughly nineteen schools, you know, we are unique because of the 408 square miles. You know, adding the vans on to the route are always an option, each time we add a van, it's $35,000. We cut one van out, we combine one route out of district this past summer, and two routes in district, so we've reduced by, you know, $105,000. So we can solve the problem by adding a van on, so we'll be able to find a driver in a van, it's going to cost $35,000.
And that's the other thing, is we all voted, some were against it, some were for it, the budget is already tight, so you're going to come up with another $35,000 for this issue.
We have to comply with the law, whether we want to or not.
The option is to pick everybody up at their house, all eighteen kids up at their house on one day, on one bus.
Well, that's an option, it's not the only option.
Okay, well, I'm saying it is an option.
It's an option.
Yes, the other option is $35,000.
No, there are other options.
So could we get the, our solicitor to look at, make sure that this, that we are legal, to get something by next meeting on, instead of us reading part of the law and figuring it out?
Yes, in the meantime, I'd like to, I'd like to, the Transportation Committee to meet and try to resolve this problem, and have the Solicitor join you to make sure that the district complies with the law, or not.
Let's do that, I think that's a good idea, let's put that to the Transportation Committee.
At some point, we might as well change, because my kids went to Christian School, and they got torn at the house, rode the bus to Beedville High School, and kids from Calvary, all the kids got together on that one bus, and they got transported to wherever they headed.
It's different, we do, we do a variety of things, you know, whether it's split routes, or changing buses at schools, or different schools, we do a variety of things to, to get all these kids to the nineteen schools that we send them.
We can resolve it tonight, so I suggest
I think it is a good idea to do the Transportation Committee, I will make sure that I send something out tomorrow, and I'll make sure that I reach out to at least the two families that contacted me, along with Tim, I think I do have his contact information, or
I have their email.
We have their emails, so I'll make sure that they're
Well, let's add, are there other kids that we're asking the parents to transport long distances, that we're discriminating against kids that are being transported? Because there's probably school buses going by some of these homes, and there's no reason, like, like you were saying, Bob, they can't be picked up and go to a central point where then they can be moved further. It, it doesn't look right to me.
We do a lot of that.
Well, it doesn't sound like these families are being accommodated at all, and I'll bet you there's a bus that goes quite close to their home.
Well, like I said, let's get the Transportation Committee together, and then come up with a solution for the next, the next month meeting.
And I want to say, it's disappointing to hear that these families are up against this, and they're not getting help out of us. That's disappointing to hear.
Tell me in a more second.
Okay.
All right, just two comments, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Brian, Mr. Custer.
Good evening, I'm Brian Custer from Eastley Township, and really, I, I had some other notes that I was going to use for my five minutes, but there are two primary that I would like to discuss with you this evening. The first is that we're seeing many school districts across the country that are trying to get in front of possible mandates for COVID and school closings, and forced vaccinations. I think it would be appropriate for Pencrest School District to come up with their policy and how they are going to react, not only based on millions of dollars that are being held and given to us from the state, but better for our students' safety, and perhaps not lowering the scores to 30% because they weren't in school. But I think perhaps the Board should think about this, and try to come up with our answer before we're faced with mask mandates and all of that. So that's the first issue. And the other issue, and I've heard it many times tonight, are we acting legally? Are we following policy? Are we doing what we say we're going to do? And so, this may be unpleasant, but as an example, I'm just going to share a little bit about some unpleasant minutes that I was asked to deal with, as well as at least three other members who were running in the primary. And these people, I found myself with being served by taping it on my door, that's how you serve people, I guess, this day, which is unlawful. However, I find myself in court, and every judge had to recuse himself because we're friends with all of them, so they bring the judge down from Erie, following a policy, and trying to have myself taken off the ballot. Thankfully, the judge saw that that was not the case, that I did not break policy. And yet, three other people were removed from the ballot, completely, even though they were taken to court by the Democratic side, which should have only removed them from the Democratic ballot. So my question, are we going to follow policy or not? And in that regard, I wanted to take a look at the Board absenteeism, so I did look up absenteeism from back to January. Mr. Brooks has missed two non-consecutive meetings, Mr. Brown has missed one.
Where's Mr. Valesky?
Pardon me?
Where's Mr. Valesky?
I'm working on it. Okay? Thank you. Mr. Bryant missed one, Mr. Chowsey missed one, I have the dates if you want them, Ms. Kroll missed five, four that were consecutive, four consecutive, without calling in. Mr. DiFrancesco missed none, Mr. Johnson missed none, Ms. Tyson Wright missed two consecutive, but she called in. Mr. Valesky missed one on 7/10. So my question is, if you have a person who was elected by this community and said they wanted to serve, and the policy is you missed two consecutive, that you can be removed, my question is, if a person misses four consecutive without calling in, does that person want to serve? Should that person be asked to either resign, or to be, through policy, procedures, should the person be removed? That's my question for the Board. Nothing personal against you, Teresa, nothing personal. It's policy and procedure, we follow it, or we don't. Thank you.
Non-registered citizens have two minutes, if they'd like to come forward and speak on anything before the Board. Just state your name and your municipality.
James Drunken, and I live in Guys Mills, well, I have a Guys Mills address. The issue with Crawford Central School District, take a good look at me, I was the one that drove last year. I drove their route, the five stops, the four stops, Fontstown, Chapmanville, St. Hippolyte, French Town, of course, Blooming Valley. And I would wait for them to get there, and they will tell you that, and I would wait in the afternoons, I would never let a kid off the bus if their parents or representative that was pre-designated was there to pick that kid, I would chill them up. I would never leave them at the fire hall unattended, or at the church, or anywhere for that matter. I made a suggestion, because I was driving a sixty-six passenger bus and hauling, some days, twelve kids, that we should have split this up to vans, it would be more efficient gas-wise, it would certainly be more efficient for the, the parents, because several parents approached me and said, could you please alter your route and come down and pick my kid up? I did that once, and got the wrath of both the PM and the wrath of the Pencrests, saying, do that again and you won't drive. So I had to stay the route that was predetermined. So they have a valid argument as a driver of that bus last year, I can tell you, there is a better solution, and if you want to meet with me, I have several great ideas. Thank you.
Other residents? Solicitor remarks, Mr. King, do you have any remarks this evening?
No, thank you very much, Dr. Valesky.
Thank you, I just have two, I'm just going to interject myself. So I'd first like to congratulate the Valesky family on the birth of their son, the Saturday, James Oliver Valesky. That's why David's not here, both he and his wife and the baby, well, I don't know how David's doing, but his wife and the baby are doing well, and their health is in full order, so we congratulate them on that, the birthday of our child. Lassie, just have a quick statement to read, so as the Board knows, the district has been involved with negotiations with the Teachers Association since January 4/22. As many people know, I'm leaving the district the end of the month, and I was asked to update the Board on the status of negotiations this evening. For the past twenty-one months, the Board and Administration have met at least thirty times to negotiate new contracts. During these thirty meetings, the district and union have tentatively agreed to a few provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. However, the major impediment for getting to a new contract are salary and benefits. Despite our good-faith effort, the district and the union have not been able to agree on those terms. In a recent proposal by the district, as discussed in approval on August 17th, the School Board rejected the union's offer, and proposed a two-year contract with stipends for our teachers in the amount of $2,500 per year, in addition to their current salary, the rest of the contract stays status quo. The district and the union will continue to bargain in good faith until a fair contract is negotiated. Until that time, the district and the union continue to operate under the current provisions of the collective bargaining agreement, until a fair, negotiated contract is reached. And I only share that as I will not be continuing as a negotiation member as we move forward in a different direction.
Can you tell us?
That's it.
Thank you.
Can you tell the Board and the public which point that they're holding everything back, you know, and most of critical that
The, right now, it's, the sticking points are salary and healthcare.
As far as the healthcare, can you let us know what?
It's the contribution.
Could I, can I ask another question? So what is it that we currently ask the teachers to pay for their healthcare?
Current contribution is $720.
And that's for a year?
Yes.
And then what are their deductibles?
Three and six, three and six hundred.
So we have Social Security recipients, anybody know what they pay for healthcare in a month? I mean, it's hundreds of dollars on top of deductibles. I'm kind of astounded that, that that's a point that we can't seem to negotiate on, because I don't know of any other company in the county that has such a lucrative program.
It's okay, so.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I'm disappointed that we can't reach an agreement.
All right. Mr. Brown, would you like to, any remarks? Start the board on that, you know?
Oh, okay, I was going to say I don't have the remarks. Oh, no, I'm out of this, I have nothing to do with that. Yeah, I guess I'll start things off tonight. Well, first off, good evening, and thank you to everyone for coming. It's beginning of another school year, full of challenges. First, I want to thank Mr. Doc, or Dr. Glasspool for your years of leadership. You have gained respect of many employees, citizens of Pencrest, and I personally want to thank you for all your hard work. New business, I've said for some time, our community seems to always come together, and again, they proved me right. First off, Jeremy Hitchcock, along with Matt, they started their fund, which I kindly, I touched on a little bit earlier, but I, I just want the public to know that this, what they're doing for the mental health awareness, and they've made a commitment. As community members, they have made a commitment to our community, and I just want to applaud them for their dedication, commitment, and to help your local communities battle this illness, and hopefully prevent this from happening to another family. Thank you. Next, to better Pencrest candidates who put together or drive and collect school supplies to help our teachers, thank you for your time, your energy, and most of all, thank you to the community for coming out and supporting our teachers and students. I was fortunate to be at one of them, and the outpouring, it was just awesome to be there, the kids, the parents, they, it was just fun, fun evening. Okay, Ella, thank you for coming up, you did a fantastic job. It's always great to hear when the students come up, I wish we could have had more, but just one thing, next time, make me aware of the kickball tournament, I love kickball, that's fun. I want to thank the teachers, support staff, bus drivers, you all face many challenges every day, and you all step up to keep our students first, and you don't get it enough, but thank you very much for all you do, I truly appreciate it. More new business, now I'm going to skip down. Good news is, we're having a meeting the nineteenth at Cambridge Springs High School to discuss steps to improve our schools and keep our students safe. Please come up with open minds and not jump to conclusions, facts are how good decisions are made. I've already had the rumor come to me a couple times, that a couple Board members are telling citizens that we have already decided to close Cambridge Springs High School, that we've already sent the paperwork in. we've already sent the paperwork in, and I, I have to tell you, this is a lie. If board members did do this, they should be ashamed of themselves. I'm not saying they did, but this is just rumors. There is no discussion of that. We are looking at ways to save money and make ourselves better and safer for the students. That's what this is about. There was also an education meeting before that, should be about a half hour, right, Dr. Glasspool, is what we have to slate?
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah. Or we'll shoot for a half hour. Plus, I will have a better presentation on the Hitchcock Memorial. So Monday, the eighteenth, Better Pencrest is having a candidate forum, and all are welcome to attend and learn more about the candidates. Unlike the Better Four Pencrest group, funny they can't come up with their own name, but we invited everyone on the ballot to the forum. Hope all interested in local politics come and get in form. And see here, Cambridge Springs Elementary School, I was at the open house, and Mrs. Stevens, I think I saw, hey, there you are. We had a fun time. Let me tell you, it was exciting to see the kids running around, the parents running around, pictures being taken, and as Debbie Miller said, it was neat going into all the rooms and seeing how each teacher has her own specific setup, whether it be cowboys and Indians or, there was just so much to see, pirates. It was actually fun. I enjoyed myself. Had my picture taken a few times, I'm not sure I enjoyed that, but... So to Jen Stevens, you, you did a fantastic job along with your staff and the janitors helping getting everything ready. Thanks to everybody at Cambridge Springs. And I think last but least is, somebody shared with me a post by Dan Healy, which is kind of funny, but truth does not mind being questioned. A lie does not like being challenged. It's funny coming from Dan, but it's quite fitting for that group. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'd like to reiterate what, reiterate what Tim said. Thank you, Dr. Glasspool, for your time up here in Pencrest. You've taken us through some very interesting times. You look back on some of the things we accomplished. We had one of the highest attendance rates during COVID. We came out of COVID better than any other district in Pennsylvania. I firmly believe that. Our growth wrestling program and a new curriculum, I really think that, you know, without you here, that we'd be a different school district than we are. So thank you. Let's see, Bawda Baw, Edie Schlosser and Deb Leiberg are retired. It's often easy to walk by the custodians and the, the lunch people and just take them for granted, and both of them have been great employees and great people, and I know that they're a resource for our kids. With school starting, great to see sports, kids playing football, you know, the class schedule, and we are a class that was worked out, you know, who you're in class with, homecoming courts, band competitions. Last Saturday, I got the chance to announce for the eighth year in a row, Sagertown Little Gritters. I would encourage everybody on the board to announce at a gritters game. These listening sessions we have scheduled are nice, but if you're announcing a gritters game, you get to hear everything directly from all the parents right there. So for eight years, I've heard scoreboards and field conditions, and one speaker was making a tick, tick, tick noise, and as a board member announcing, you get to hear honest feedback from parents who are hyped about their kids. So there is an opening Saturday, I'll be unable to, if anyone wants to announce, make, make some nicknames up for the kids. It'll be great at Sagertown, and I know Maplewood and Cambridge also need to announce too. The, the public comment meetings we have coming up, you know, attending, pay attention to them, you know? I'll say sports, just because that'll get people there, but, you know, the schools are here to educate, not just to play sport, but we pay attention to sport. And some sports, all, all these discussions are worth having, whether you agree with them or disagree with them, come in with an open mind. You know, what should we consolidate? How can we do things better? I saw Sagertown football, and Friday we finished with thirteen healthy kids, finished our football And when you watch this, speaking to some other coaches, you know, are we putting our kids in position to succeed, or are we just looking to get kids on the field? So we say that we started. You know, it's, it's worth a discussion. Everything's worth a discussion. I've flipped a lot back and forth on consolidation, but if we can't have an open, honest discussion about where we want the future of our district, and we just come in with, this is how it's going to be, then there's no sense having a discussion. Now, that's same for, for buildings, it's the same for all of these things, you know? What does it look like to do these things? With, with a new board coming up, you know, we all need to stop, we need to row in the same direction, you know, we need to like stop, collaborate, listen. There's going to be a new board, a new superintendent, and we need to have an actual direction that we want our district to go. The last couple of years, we've just been kind of not all row in the same direction. It's, it's whatever happens to come up, not, we're going to have the best English program in all Northwest Pennsylvania. We're going to have the best education. We're going to do all we can. It's just been random nonsense. With me being off the board, hopefully that'll help, and you need to hold the board accountable and focus on the kids, the future education, and not everything else we've been doing. Our community's invested in public schools, the Stuff the Buzz, the Hitchcock Foundation. You look out there at the boosters that are out there, you know, you talked about the teachers, how they're doing their room. There's so many candy sales. If you get on Facebook, everyone's selling a date where you buy whatever the day is to support cheerleaders or gritters or wrestling or whatever. People want our kids to succeed, and we need a board that's invested in them succeeding as well. This is my last meeting here in Maplewood Elementary School stage. I was cleaning out my house, found my mom's nineteen sixty-five yearbook when she graduated on this stage right here. Twelve years later, I was on this stage during a musical, playing the role of the bad bull in Buffalo. And here I am fifty years later, and I get to say goodbye to Maplewood Elementary School stage, and the towel that looks just like what was in the gym floor up until last year. Now, Maplewood is a great place. It's a great community, and I've been honored to be on the board and glad, glad I get to say goodbye to this stage. That's it.
Yeah, thanks, Tim, for everything you've done for me, texts and callbacks that are real quick. I really appreciate the last five months learning as a new school board member, so, and I'm excited for you and your family, that you're going to be together and close by and all that, so, thank you. Good luck. And, um, Greta and, you've been heard. I was doing some research the last two days, and I've had, have a ton of questions. I hope Mr. Rankin, who drives a school bus, can come up with some answers. He has a school board together. We could come up and, and like Fred was saying, obey the law and policies and find a quick solution for you, but you've been heard, so thank you for telling us. Two things is, one more is Dave Valeski, congratulations on your baby. I'm not going to be biased. Congratulations to the junior high basketball Maplewood team, which my daughter plays on. Izzy is doing a great job. She's nineteen, she's a coach. So way to go, and that's it.
Hey, Luigi. I'm sorry, I forgot one thing. Congratulations, Theresa. I hope you have a wonderful day tomorrow. Congratulations and hope it works out, and if you like this, good.
So, right. Bob?
I'd like to thank Dr. Glasspool. You certainly have had your challenges over the last couple of years with the COVID regulations, the state, federal government, the health department, everybody throwing at you. Your time was totally distracted from the duties of the school, but you've made it a, an awesome time here, and I don't blame you, being away from your family stuff. I did it for years when I was driving trucks, so congratulations on your new endeavor. I'd like to also congratulate Mr. and Mrs. Valeski on the new baby that came in, and I'm glad that everything turned out, they're all healthy, and that's all. I, I've got, my focus is totally out of that, because I, Tuesday, I lost a dear friend. Thirty-one years we weren't together, and he died of cancer, and this just broke my focus, so...
Thank you, Bob. Fred?
I too would like to wish you the very best in your new endeavors, and, and I appreciate all you've put up with, with the board, and I, I think it's been a challenge for, for you, and I really appreciate that you stuck with it, and you were always professional, so I wish you the very best. That's all.
Hang on, I shouldn't be having that microphone. Is it on?
Yep.
I genuinely thank you, Dr. Glasspool, for your diligence in working to make Pencrest a district to be proud of. On a personal note, you have been quick in your responses to my requests, always utterly respectful to everyone, and you put the pro in professionalism. You absolutely will be missed, and I wish you joy as you begin this new chapter in your life.
Thanks.
And on another note, I've been concerned that once December comes along and I am no longer on this board, the programs and incentives I have been working on tirelessly will come to an end. This should concern all of you too. Bringing back the valedictorian and salutatorian, as a wish that the students want, and I'd like to see that it's a traction, also offering totally free college credit courses, and continuing the newly developing collaborative committee to advance student progress, all of which benefits your children. I'm happy tonight to report that Michael Chauncey, David Valeski, and Brian Custard have given their commitment to not only ensure the traction of these programs, but to see them through to fruition. I'm grateful to know that the students will benefit from their actions. Thank you for listening, and please have a blessed evening.
So I will add my remarks as well. For Dr. Glasspool, I do appreciate working with him over the past several years. I've worked with several school superintendents. Tim, you've been fabulous, helping resolve issues that I personally have in the school as well as board issues, so it's, I, I appreciate it, and we do wish you the best. You know, we hate losing you, but I get it. It's all family. And so the next thing I wanted to mention and to address is Mr. Custard, but yes, I did miss four meetings in a row. July tenth was a vacation with family, which is more important than this. And in August, I was away on business, so I wasn't there. And those are things, I do have a livelihood, and pretty sure every board member up here gets paid a lot of money to be up here. It's called zero dollars. So I have an income that I have to do for my family, and that's what happened. So, you know, if you want to know where we are, you can ask at any time. That is not something that I'm afraid of. It's not like some board members just, I don't feel like going to a meeting. No, there's typically good reasons for us not to be at meetings, whether it's I'm attending my son's soccer game and I'm on a headset, volleyball games, how many times have I been in the bleachers? I'm on mute and I'm voting, because I have a commitment to my family first, then to the board. So I think that that is critical, that everybody understand that. And if they want to vote me off the board, woo-hoo, I get more time with my family, right? But I've been voted in by the, by the, the district here, so I have two more years to serve, and I intend to do that. So that's, that's my comments to Mr. Custard. I also want to commend our administration and our teachers. This hasn't been mentioned yet, but on the high, the Sagertown High School page, the Pencrest School District, US News and World Report had ranked our district one of the top districts in the nation. I don't know if you guys saw that or not, but coming out of COVID, everybody's been, you know, complaining about, oh, our scores are terrible, and, oh, you know, Pencrest isn't what it used to be. We're getting there. We're getting there. We got recognized by a national organization that we are one of the top district, high school districts in the nation. So I'm pretty sure that needs some recognition, but no one said anything. I saw it on the Sagertown page, so thank you, the administrators. I don't even know who posted that, but I appreciate that, because that means something to me, because my kids are part of this district and they're going to high school right now. And we're getting there. It's, it's going to take time. I appreciate Mr. Newman's efforts on the curriculum, because that's what it's going to take, you know, getting our score levels up, getting these kids to where they need to be, and COVID did take a really bad toll. I get that, but we're going in the right direction, and I appreciate everybody's input and support to get there, so it's worth recognizing. I do want to also congratulate all the homecoming courts. I've seen posts on all of length of Pitchfork, the Panther Press, I can't remember the Maplewood shit. The, is it the Woodshed?
Woodshed, yeah.
Yeah, because I always, but yeah, so those, I, I look at all those newsletters, and they're great. So good luck to all the participants. It's a fun time, make memories, have fun, you know, just, just enjoy it, because it goes by so quickly. So, but good luck to them. And then as far as like the sports, because I know the sports have been mentioned with basketball, football, all those things. My son plays soccer, and I will say, soccer is a struggle. I love those kids, but it's a struggle. The Sagertown soccer team is made up of all three schools, Cambridge Springs, Maplewood, and Sagertown, but they play for Sagertown. So imagine being a Maplewood High School player and a Cambridge Springs High School player wearing Sagertown colors. So this is really a, a great effort on their part. These kids are awesome. They come together, they've got great morale. They're not playing so great, but that's okay, they've got great spirit. So, but they're learning, and it, it's great to watch, and I enjoy it. So if I'm not here, like I believe next week we have a meeting, I'm going to be late. I was late Monday because my son had a game. So it's great to watch these kids participate with each other and play, play different teams, even if they do lose. They lose with grace, they lose with dignity, and they're learning sportsmanship. So it really is a great thing, and I, you know, I just want to mention that, because Sarah Watson is their head coach, and she really does get them to work together, and it's, it's just a great thing. I know we don't, we're not, I'm not advocating, you know, combining football teams or anything, but soccer is combined. It already is combined, and the girls' soccer team is combined. So it's already working for those two, so I'm just, just let it be and let it, let them have a successful year. So, but I do appreciate being here, and thank you, Tim, because tomorrow was a big day, and I, I gotta stop talking.
Thank you. I tried to keep, I'm going to keep it very short, so everybody can go home. I can't kind of say that Glasspool is leaving, but, you know, we all have a, a goal in mind and personal things to take care of. I know that Mr. Glasspool always tried to put the children education first, and he, and under the direction of the board, he made sure that nothing else was taught to the kids except the education that was approved by the board in a curriculum. The education is very most important, not only the education, but also the safety of our children, and the safety under the direction of the board, and from his own initiative, we improve on the safety of our kids in, 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 in every school. And he just brought to my attention that this is the only district that he knows that we got three schools, three high schools, three elementary schools. Hey, well, that's because of, I guess, the size of the district. But he managed it real well, and we hope that we, to find somebody else that will be just as, as good as, as he has been. And like I say, you know, the, and the board will be looking for the new superintendent to make sure that the education of the kids is paramount and with its safety, and to satisfy the parents that we are educated, that this district is educating the children so they can have a successful future life. And like I said, I'm going to keep it short, and this is it. And thanks all for coming. And now we need a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor, say aye.